Madam Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance to the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.23711B of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Ms. Harrow.
Yes.
Ms. Hyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Rasnick.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Is what it is.
Thank you. If you'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of the agenda, or shall I move to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you, the agenda for this evening is adopted. Next, we will have public comments and requests. I have three slips before me this evening. It's nice to have company in the hall with us. The first slip this evening is for Donna Englander, if you will approach and speak. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and members of the school board, it gives me great pleasure to be here this evening and to be able to introduce our new partners for the Falls Church Education Foundation, and these partners represent the Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation, and what they are doing is they're making a long-term commitment. It is a grant that's renewable every year in the amount of $4,500 to fund the Beginner Teacher Program. So that is an expansion of our new teacher initiative, and that includes everything from expanding our mentorship to not just include year-one teachers, but years-two and three as well, and Workshop Wednesdays program, which is a new professional development program, as you all know. So we're very excited. They are also going to be funding in an evaluation piece because they're not just funding our program here in Falls Church, but they're also funding programs throughout the metropolitan northern Virginia area, I should say. So I'm going to introduce Mike Angley, the Executive Director of the Apple Federal Credit Union, and Betsy Goodman, she's the Grants Manager at Apple Federal Credit Union Education Foundation.
If I could just say, give, bring you greetings from our board, from both the Foundation Board and the Apple Credit Union Board. We're delighted to be able to work with you in a more formal way. Our foundation is very focused on advancing education and supporting the school divisions that we work with. This year, as Donna pointed out, we will have nine school divisions involved in our project, and we look forward to it being a regional effort, which not only can we help you, but we think that your school division will be able to benefit from the involvement of the other school divisions as well. We really look forward to working with you and hope to be chatting with you again about the progress we make. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Ms. Harrow?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick note, that this is not the first involvement of Apple Federal Credit Union in a very significant way with our education foundation. They've been supporters of our gala and over several years, and we really owe them a big thank you for their participation in the past, as well as they're stepping up to a new level for the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next comment is from Maisie Mead, if you could come up and if you will introduce yourself and give us your address before your comments, and the comments need to be held to three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board. I had sent in advance at this meeting some documentation of what I'm going to be speaking about, an event that happened on May 25th at Mary Ellen Henderson, where my daughter just completed seventh grade. My daughter is on the VAP, and she receives special education services in a self-contained classroom. She is also mainstream for some electives and non-core educational courses. For her birthday, I gave her an iPad because that she, I'd been told by her teacher, Ms. Moriarty, that she works very well on it. It was something that she had access to, but it was not something that was sort of programmed to her, whereas there was a class of kids that did have iPads assigned to them for that coursework. But in Ms. Moriarty's classroom, there was not an iPad dedicated to Haley. And so I provided an iPad, I sent it in, you have all the email documentation, I gave her my password, she set it up, and it was my understanding that it was going to be for use in her classroom. And on, so it came in on April 30th, everything went fine, we said it would come home on Fridays. It came home for three Fridays, and then the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, it was not in her backpack. And I texted her right away and said, you know, where's the iPad? And she said, I wasn't there today, I'm coaching soccer tonight, I can, you know, meet you back at the school and get it. And I said, well, I'm picking up my mom from the hospital, so I can't. And I said, we can do without it this weekend. And then, sort of, this email exchange went on after this about that here, you know, Ms. Moriarty was instructing my daughter on her personal iPad, but, you know, implementing her IEP on it. And there was a plan to maintain it and how it was going to be gone, but nobody ever consulted me about that, because I never would have consented to have, you know, a child with an intellectual disability be responsible for a $500 computer. I never would have. My understanding it was going to be used in her classroom in the special place that she said she was going to put it. And if I had known that they were going to stick it in her backpack and let her put it in a locker, you know, that would have not been my choice. And when I approached the school, their response was, well, I'm sorry, it was a personal item, we're not responsible. And I feel like, no, it looks like they're clear as evidence that somebody was maintaining this iPad in for her use in the school. And I feel like because that Ms. Moriarty was out on that day, the message did not get passed along, and that's why Haley took it to the library, where there's a video of her taking it in, but there's no video of her in the school after that, and I don't know why. But I just feel like that my daughter can't be held solely responsible for the loss of the iPad. And that's why I would like to ask the board to reimburse for the expense of this, you know, this item.
All right, thank you. Okay. Our next speaker slip is from Ms. Shannon Royce.
I brought written comments, because I can barely say hello in three minutes, so.
Really?
I think you all know me fairly well, and you know that I make every effort to deal with issues with both grace and truth. And I have a problem to talk to you about tonight, and my time is very limited, so forgive me that it's going to be rather pointed, and that's why I'm doing written remarks, because there's a lot of grace in there, and I would love to do both, but I don't have time. We've lived in the city for 14 years, that means we've been through 14 IEPs, four triennials, countless teachers, several administrators, three directors, and three superintendents. Many of them have been wonderful. I am here tonight to talk to you about the reality that there are general education teachers who simply do not implement IEPs. And when they don't, a child with a disability does not have his or her needs met. And I'll just speak very personally. I had planned to come to you next year, when Caleb finished school. He had two teachers in eighth grade, two teachers in ninth grade, a teacher in 10th grade, and a teacher this year, who simply did not do what they needed to do to meet his needs. And I have, trust me when I tell you, I have done it all. I have done the private meetings, I have done the group meetings, I have done pulling Liz and Tony into the picture, I've met with the Assistant Principal, I've met with the principal, I have done it all. I've taken pumpkin bread, I mean, I've done the kind Christmas gifts, I've done everything that I know to do to be that engaged, active, educated, thoughtful, gracious mom. And I'm here to tell you that when you're dealing with a teacher who, for whatever reason, whether they need extra professional training, whether they have too many extracurriculars on their plate, or whether they just have a bad attitude, when you're dealing with a teacher who, for whatever reason, is not implementing a child's IEP, and therefore not meeting the needs of a child with a disability, it doesn't matter how great you are in all the things you're doing, because the child still is not getting his needs met. And I, like I said, I plan to come next year, and this year I just had it up to here, because we dealt with it again. And in January, my son has a rather complex picture, he's very gifted, gross learning disabilities, rather complex. So while the teacher's legally liable to implement from the first day of school, okay, this is the reality, I always extend a lot of grace in that first semester, thinking, they're getting to know my kid while they're getting to know a lot of other kids. When you get to the third quarter and you're still not doing what the IEP says, there's a problem. So I went to the Assistant Principal and talked with him, and his response was, and I'm quoting, "He's a very good teacher. I don't want to discourage him. I want both Mr. So-and-so and your son to be successful." Now here's the problem. I'm sure this teacher is a very good teacher for typical children. I don't have one of those. My son is gifted with learning disabilities, he is not typical, and this teacher was not a very good teacher to my son. In fact, he was an abject failure. And it was the job of this administrator to call that teacher in and say, you know what, you're a great teacher, here's all the things I think you're doing well, but with this kid, you're really failing, and I want to plan on my desk by Monday of how you're going to correct this. And if you have trouble, Ms. Germer is here to help you figure out what you need to do. And I'm here to tell you, you've worked with me for years, ladies and gentlemen, it's not happening. It didn't happen in eighth grade, it didn't happen in ninth grade, it didn't happen in 10th grade, and it didn't happen this year. So I stepped down from the chairmanship, I've been chairman for six years and been on the committee for 11, because I had to come and tell you, this is a problem. It really is real. It's not just one or two or three of us out here struggling with this, there is a problem. Now, Ms. Germer and I have a very respectful, warm relationship, I think very highly of her, I have worked very well with Tony since she has come here. They have both assured me that we're doing this new plan next year, okay, this new teacher evaluation plan, which is wonderful, okay? It's something the committee has requested for several years. Here's the problem with it practically. That same administrator, who today has the authority to correct this teacher, but doesn't want to discourage him, is going to be the administrator implementing the new evaluation plan. So forgive me, that does not give me a lot of assurance, because he has the authority to correct today, yeah, I'm finishing, but he doesn't have the will. And unless there is both authority and will to correct a teacher who's not doing what they need to be doing, the child is not going to have his needs met. I could go on, but my time is up. I have longer remarks that have more information that I think would be helpful, and I will ask that they be distributed, please, to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kimball, are there other communications the board needs to be aware of?
No, ma'am, there are not.
All right. Next on our agenda, item 7.01, Food Service Update on the Summer Program. That must be Mr. Kane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I thought I would come down here and tell you how it's going with the summer food program. I think it's going pretty well. I would like to tell you a little bit about the process, and I'll try to make it as quick as possible. First of all, we called every single parent on free and reduced lunch. The ones that we did not get, we sent them email in multiple languages, they responded. The ones we spoke to on the phone were very gracious and very happy that we were providing this service, and only one or two weren't interested in it. We're feeding all the children in the summer school program, so as not to identify anybody who is on free and reduced. So we provide them all. Kids who have allergies, I called every parent myself if it was a severe allergy, to find out what the kid could eat, because we supply the same lunch, you know, they get bag lunches to every kid. So if they had, for instance, at the elementary level, there's a pineapple allergy, nobody in the whole school gets pineapple, so there's no mixed fruit. We don't serve peanut butter, so, to any of the elementaries, because of several of those. And if they have a religious need, like there are a couple who can't eat pork, then we identify the allergies and we put them in a separate Ziploc bag, we label it with that student's name, and we inform the drivers who is to get it with their name, because the drivers, the bus drivers are informed, they know who their kids are. The way the process works right now, it's been a progress, it's been in progress, is we make all the bag lunches, we take them out to the buses. Right now, we divide it among the buses, the bus drivers working with transportation, they count the kids as they get on the bus. Oh, let me back up. I call each school and get attendance for the day for each school, so that we will have the correct amount of lunches for when they're coming out to the bus. The bus drivers count each student as they get on the bus, and then they redistribute it among the bus. And the kids get it as they're getting off the bus to go home. When they get over to Mount Daniel, for the kids who are going to daycare, daycare sends out a aide to get the kids, they get their lunches. For the kids who are already at Mount Daniel, who are just going from the class to daycare, they send out a aide, they count those kids, they come out, and the bus driver gives them those lunches. So it's been a work in progress, it has been getting better every day. My best story that I have, Peggy Ball over at Mount Daniel, she called me and she said, Richard, I just have to tell you this story. There was this little kid who was waiting for their parent, and the little kid said, well, what am I supposed to do? So she said, the little kid, she said, well, eat your lunch. So the little kid opened up the lunch and said, wow, crackers, I love crackers. Took out the sandwich and said, wow, even a sandwich, this is great. And I was like, well, thank you very much for telling me that story. She said the kid was so happy just to get lunch. And I was like, wow. And so I made sure that I relayed that story to my staff, which made them very happy. And I wanted to let you know that we are making a difference, and I want to say thank you to the school board for being very supportive of this program. And we're trying to make sure that we reach as many as we can. And that's it in a nutshell. So, thank you for taking the time to hear me out.
Does anyone on the board like to ask a question or make a comment? Should I start on this end and then go down to you?
How is the placement of books in the process going with the lunch program?
At this moment, I'm not placing any books, but from what I understand, summer school gives them books, the teachers give them books.
Another data source.
Yeah, we need another data source for the books, part of the books in backpack.
Yeah, and we're planning on, when we roll out in the fall, to be honest with you, I just have to commend Richard, because he makes it sound really easy to pull this off. This has taken planning since the day we talked about this in the budget season. It's taken a tremendous, tremendous amount of planning and strategizing on how you feed all these children in different places, and of course, in transportation, they're worried about having food on the bus rolling around, and so the backpack, when we started talking about the book portion, we know with summer school, they're sending materials home with kids, so we felt like we were okay for the summer. And starting in the fall, we want to make sure we implement that, because it'll be Friday, Saturday, you know, going home for the weekend. So we're planning ahead for that, but we just, it was one of those things that was pulling off a little bit too much for us this summer.
Yeah, that makes good sense, thanks. Anybody on this end?
By the way, just wanted to offer up a little bit more information about the books that our principals, elementary principals, instructional leaders, have actually contacted me a couple weeks ago, and as part of the regular library going through the inventory and the weeding and the gleaning, requested that they be able to take discarded books and then provide those to the students this summer, and went ahead and, you know, authorized them to do so, because otherwise they would just be discarded or given to other school systems. So the principals have really picked up on this instructional piece as well and are running with it.
And I just wanted to make one comment that I forgot. After talking to the state, we are getting reimbursed from the state for the kids who are in summer school as a closed program. So we do get reimbursed, we did not anticipate this. I talked to the state at different levels, the Health Department, to make sure that we could do this before, to make sure it was right to do it, and I finally got approval that we could do it. So, just wanted to throw that in there, so we're not covering the whole cost.
Even better, even better. Anybody on this end like to make a comment?
Richard, I always, man, I do my best not to cry when you come and give an update, because I am always so excited and impressed by your creativity, and your passion, and your can-do attitude, and I think that's infectious with your staff, and I just simply want to share our words of gratitude to you and your staff for figuring out a way to get it done, even though I know it is logistically very hard. I think about, for parents at home, think about the number of children you have in your household, and trying to get lunch out the door for those kids, and then all the kids that Richard's responsible for, every day, kind of dealing with all of their needs and their allergies, and the numbers, and the heat, and the little bodies and the big bodies, and I just, thank you. Thank you for continuing your commitment and creativity here, and please give our warmest gratitude to your staff, too.
I will, and I just want to add one more thing, that transportation and daycare have been very instrumental, and the tendents, secretaries at each school have been very instrumental in making sure that we all work together and make this work. So, I just wanted to say thank you to them, too.
All right, thanks for coming tonight, I can't say anything any better than Joan already said it, so I won't, but thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Such a great story, I love that. All right, my laptop died, so I'm just going to go from my notes here. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, Mr. Kimball.
Ma'am, a number of items on the Consent Agenda this evening. The first, personnel, that the board approve the following staff appointments for the 2012-2013 school year. Sean Northrup, Theater Arts Teacher, George Mason. Keisha LeGueyeur, Media Specialist, George Mason High School. Rebecca Taylor, fourth grade teacher, Thomas Jefferson. Joshua Townsend, fourth grade teacher, Thomas Jefferson. Margaret Drawbuck, kindergarten teacher, Mount Daniel. Carolyn Svetolich, music teacher, Mount Daniel. Evelyn Horovitz, Special Education Paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Sandra Jolie Kerr, Special Education Teacher, Systemwide. Sean Fernandez, Special Education Paraprofessional, Systemwide. Reappointment that the school board approve, the reappointment of Kimberly Aubrey, Preschool Special Education Teacher, Mount Daniel, for the 2012-2013 school year. Resignation that the board accept the following resignations. Brett Spargrove, Instructional Technology Resource Teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective July 2nd, 2012. Danielle Clark, Preschool Special Education Teacher, Mount Daniel, effective immediately. And resignation, no show, Vonda Willis, Special Education Teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective immediately. For childcare leave, that the board approve, childcare leave for a part-time teacher, Thomas Jefferson, effective September 4th, 2012, through October 5th, 2012. Extra pay for extra duty assignments, that the school board approve the following EPED assignments for the 2012-2013 school year. One Instructional Leadership CERT EPED assignment. One Instructional Leadership EPED assignment, Mount Daniel, Thomas Jefferson. Seven Instructional Leadership EPED assignments, Mount Daniel. One Extracurricular Activity EPED assignment, Mount Daniel. Four Instructional Leadership EPED assignments, Mary Ellen Henderson. And 12 Extracurricular Activity EPED assignments, Mary Ellen Henderson. Under Student Matters, that the school board approve the continued enrollment of a ninth grade student at George Mason and a sixth grade student at Mary Ellen Henderson, under Policy 9.21, interrupted residence between June 30th, 2012, and September 30th, 2012. Adoption of Reimbursement Resolution for State Technology Funds, that the school board adopt Resolution 2013-001, reimbursement resolution for state technology funds as presented for school year 2012-2013 school trips, that the school board approve the following student school trips for the 2012-2013 school year. Student Exchange Trip to Santiago, Chile during spring break of 2013, and a George Mason High School band trip to New York City, March 31st through April 2nd, 2013, and/or April 20th through April 22nd, 2013. And the last item, Approval of Minutes, that the school board approve the minutes of June 5th, 2012, June 12th, 2012, and June 19th, 2012.
That's all?
That's it.
All right, is there a motion relative to the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair, I wasn't able to pull up the minutes, because I don't know, is everybody here for all the minutes?
I wasn't here for one.
That was only my question for the Consent Agenda, simply, I'm happy to move the Consent Agenda.
Are the minutes there that could be better?
Yeah, I can't.
It's like, I'm not able to.
Well, let me, how about if I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of the approval of the minutes?
Right.
We'll set those aside, and then we'll come back to it as we kind of resolve that. So I would move to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of the approval of the minutes, holding those items aside for further consideration.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now, have we sorted out the minutes, or do we want to put those aside for another day?
We don't have the minutes here. And if you wanted to go through them individually, I could tell you who's not present.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is there a corpus of four people who were at all four that you could state for us?
Set theory.
Use your math, Hunter.
Is there a train? If a train is going 100 miles.
I'm going to bet on Karen, myself, Susan.
If they're all actually four, and that would be Ms. Carney, Ms. Carney, Ms. Rasnick, in fact, will actually have been present.
Okay, so let's just do one by one. If someone has a computer.
Ms. Harrow, who's not present.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the first set of minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
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 Next day.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the next set of minutes?
So moved. Ms. Hyatt, and is what this could work on?
Not present.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion of approval?
A second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And abstentions?
Abstaining.
All right, thank you very much. Is there another set of minutes, or are we done with them?
One set forth in 19th, and everybody is present.
On the 19th.
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed or abstentions? No? Okay. Phew. All right, we're through the Consent Agenda. Next, under Business and Information, there are two topics that Dr. Jones has asked to be on the agenda, so I'll turn this over to her to discuss a calendar adjustment day, and then a school athletic and activity fees, which was something requested by this board for discussion. So, Dr. Jones.
I have a special request tonight where I'm asking for October 26th of this school year to actually be a professional day for only secondary, it would be middle school and high school. As you know, in middle school, high school, we have well over, you know, the mandated hours, but we also have less professional development time, they don't have early release every week, we have a lot of initiatives, which you've heard tonight, and I think as Mrs. Germer was talking about, we're really having a and I think as Mrs. Germer was talking about, we're really having a focused effort on professional development to get ready for next year. We specifically took our secondary team to Denver to the professional learning community because Dr. Mohammed, Anthony Mohammed, was there. And they were enamored with him. He spent time with us when we were there. Everything that we're working on is what he represents. And for our principals, he was a great model because he was a principal and turned around and really worked without risk on students and understands and has the right formula. And the principals wanted to see if we could schedule him. And so, he is nationally known and usually you have to schedule him a year in advance. And so, we said, what dates do you have available? And that we're going to make a commitment to get him here even if it's for a team of 10 or 20. But, we really feel like our middle school and high school staff are going to gain a tremendous amount by having him here for a full day. So, that's our request, is that we be able to have a professional development day adjustment on the calendar for secondary on October the 26th of the school year to get him here.
All right. Thank you. Let's get a motion on the table and then if there's discussion, we'll have it.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion, any questions for Dr. Jones? Mr. Sharp?
Yes. For that particular day, would we have some arrangement for daycare or other alternative activity for the secondary students who otherwise had anticipated being in school for that day?
It's highly likely that we could work with Katie Clinton on a minimal daycare effort for those kids that normally, right in middle school. But, beyond that, we wouldn't expect it would be, we would publicize it, you know, early. And right now, that's a professional development day.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Yeah. Dr. Jones, have we looked at any alternatives to not take away the instructional day, like, you know, other times? I mean, I just, the one, I mean, I appreciate this. It sounds like a great idea, but it's also difficult because some of the disparity in terms of overall hours of the things that we're talking about in terms of trying, you know, needing more resources. And I just, I'm a little reluctant to support taking away an instructional day for this without exploring alternatives.
The big issue for us is getting Dr. Mohammed is that we would have to wait a year to get him. And we feel like, he just literally, he's booked out every day of the week that he's available. And it just happens to be that he had two dates on his calendar and the first one didn't work anyway and it would have been the same situation. And this was the only other date when we could get him for this school year. And I guess we feel strong enough about his impact with the staff that we really, really need what he has to offer. And that is the only day that he's available. Otherwise, we'd be waiting a year to book him the following year. And to be honest, we probably would go ahead and bring him. I mean, we would, we would just have a team of 10 or 20. But, we feel like, you know, and I even, I remember when I was interviewing, this is one of the things I actually talked about, was I really believe in a professional development model instead of sending four and five people out for $800 and $1,000 a person, bringing the person here is so much more effective. And we feel like it's going to have that big of a difference for our staff.
Okay. Any other questions down here on this end?
Dr. Jones, for the benefit of the public, could you just go into a little bit about what he's going to bring to our faculty?
Yeah. Dr. Mohammed is, I actually first saw him several years ago and kept wanting to go back. And in my previous district, we actually did wait a year to get him because we felt like he was that powerful for staff. He has a background where he was an actual principal and his experience in secondary is extremely strong. And working with interventions, getting systems in place. But, he also, it even goes to the topic that our parent was speaking about tonight, when it's really about what do we do in general education to really make a difference in that, you know, if we are going to have, which we're a division that has 90%, you know, in my superintendent's report tonight, our IB scores are off the charts, you know. But, we still have that 5% or that 10% of students who are not being successful. And I don't think any of us want to say, okay, you go and pick out which 10% that's going to be. I wouldn't want it to be my child. And Dr. Mohammed is highly effective in talking about systems to put in place, talking about teacher accountability. And he also is extremely powerful with principal accountability. And he talks about school culture. And he actually has a whole book just on school culture and really helping teachers understand what is their role even within the school. You know, are they a teacher that's very much a fundamentalist and everything is about, did the student do his homework? And if he didn't, we're going to give him a zero and not being willing to really work with children. And he's just, he's one of those people that has that impact. And I fully believe when the staff hear him, that it will help the administration in secondary move along that continuum much quicker. You're welcome.
Lisa Gerber, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I just Googled him and I'm very impressed.
Yeah. You might want to come.
And I just thought, my thought she looks very young, though, because she's been in education 20 years. And he's been, he's sat, he's been a teacher, he's been an assistant principal, principal, and seems like a middle school and high school. So, yes, he's tough. I'm impressed.
Okay. Ms. Highland?
I'm going to just talk about logistics a little bit. Where in the school year does this day fall? I guess it's the end of the first quarter, toward the end of the first quarter?
We, it actually falls, and Lisa, you might be able to help me. It's towards the end of the quarter. But, the principals actually looked, we all pulled up the calendars before we agreed to the date, yeah. And it's not, it doesn't fall on homecoming week or anything like that for the kids either. So, we checked all of that for secondary.
No, that, I'm just wondering if there were a way that we could offer this to, you know, make it a professional day for all of the schools? I just, I feel like logistically, and maybe I'm just looking at this like to, you know, maybe people are more flexible than I think. But, you know, for parents of kids who are in elementary school, who also have kids in the middle and high school, it's a little complicated because we're such a small district to have, you know, a day where some, it's a professional day for only part of the system. And I just, that just concerns me a little bit. And I was wondering how, isn't there a way we could sort of incorporate this into our existing?
Or for me, you just added a day now that I have to take off because my child isn't in middle school.
Well, and we've.
Your child will.
No. No, I know. With Charlotte's suggestion.
Well, okay, okay.
Well, and that was, that's part of that thinking.
My child would be out of school if we had another professional day.
Right. Well, I meant make it one of the professional days.
Well, right now, and this is a very tricky year because it is election year as well. So, even our November day, we couldn't play with this year. We were locked into being out of school on Election Day. So, that changed our calendar this year for professional development. And we feel like in secondary, our kids are very self-sufficient as far as, you know, especially in high school. And then those kids in middle school that need to access daycare, you know, they do. And so, we felt like having kids, and to be honest with you, in my thinking even, it's kind of even a step in what I keep hearing the board talk about, we want to explore for waivers even going forward in that if we're really doing a creative waiver, are we always starting at the same time on every level and?
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, have we explored, I mean, I'm very cognizant that this, it sounds like a great idea. I only can, I'm concerned, I'm still concerned more about the loss of the instructional day more than I am the logistics, but it's another concern. But, have we all explored other, you know, like if we do bump this to a year where we can sort of plan it and get it out there, that, does he have materials that we could give to the, you know, is there multimedia, is there, can they, you know, I mean, like, I know I can Google TED and be inspired by great writers all night long on the internet, you know what I'm saying?
I might just add, I mean, I, and I think Lisa can speak to it because I knew his work and that's why I was adamant we had to go to Denver. Our elementary team, on the other hand, with this whole, with Solution Tree or going to Maryland, just down the road, because I knew who was at that conference and for elementary. But, his impact is.
He's very, very powerful. I had not heard of him, had never spoken to him. And I walked away a believer in school culture. And that having him come would be an instructional benefit to our teachers. We talk about instruction and making sure that our kids get the instruction they need. Well, this will give us an opportunity to provide instruction to our teachers that in some areas are definitely needed. And I think it will help our principals hear him all together with our teachers to move forward, move our staffs forward.
Okay. So, I'm in no way debating that this guy is obviously the pro from Dover. Sounds great. I just, I'm a little concerned about the timing and, you know, I would like to at least see that there was some alternative to this.
Right. So, is it possible that that day could be made up later in our calendar year? I think is what Mr. Rasmussen's getting at. Is that at all possible?
Well, I will just add too, remember our secondary goes so much more than our elementary. I don't really, but we could look at trading an early release day, either that week or the week before for secondary.
Just, I mean, that was sort of my point as well, is that it's right around when we're having professional days. So, that would be an extra day at the same time. You know what I'm saying? And that's why I was wondering if we couldn't make it one of the professional days, if that were possible. But, I guess that doesn't work.
Because of the election.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, because it's all right then. I mean, the election is the first week of November. This is the end of October. There's, you know, we've got so many days right then.
Right. So, I'm going to just kind of make a comment, which is that our staff doesn't come to us frequently with this passionate kind of a plea for flexibility for something they believe will be so impactful for their staff. So, I'm going to support the superintendent's request. If there's no other question or discussion, I'm going to call the vote and we'll see where we come down on it. All right. Yep. Yes, Mr.? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
I wonder if there is a adoption of this to the extent that we would extend the invitation for this Dr. Mohammed to come and be with us for that particular day, but that we reserve the chance to discuss further whether there is a swap of a professional day or some other thing that we would do for making up an instructional time for, that we could pick up at a later meeting and act on that portion of our concern at a later time.
Mr. Sharp, is that a motion?
I'm not sure it needs to be. I think what you have here is a proposal that is limited to that particular day and the use of that particular day. That we could deal with the use of some other day in the calendar at another meeting.
Okay. That's fine. So, all in favor of this motion?
We need the motion.
Oh, I thought we did it before Mr. Sharp. Sorry about that.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Miss, I didn't make the motion and you seconded it. Yeah, thank you. I thought I was losing my mind.
I apologize.
All right. Boys and girls, can we please vote on the motion?
My motion.
Joan's motion.
We're all.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed to the motion?
Nay.
Nay. Mr. Rasmussen, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is school athletic and activity fees. This was something the board had asked to be put on the agenda for discussion. And so, Dr. Jones, I'll turn it over to you to give us background.
Okay. It was perfect timing because we had just pulled all of the numbers actually and done the deposit. So, it wasn't too difficult to get it all together. The total amount that you would be looking at is $67,244 that was collected. Student parking is just over 20,000 of that. The athletic fees at 46.9. I did meet with Mr. Horn, you know, about this and also with Mr. Kimball. And I do need to share that Mr. Kimball, Mr. Horn, both have, I want to say concerns about waiving the fee for this school year because it's not built in the budget and it will need to come from somewhere else inside the budget. So, it'll take away from something. You know, Mr. Horn did want to share that, you know, and going forward to FY14, and we're very confident we can, you know, take care of that. We just didn't plan for it this year. And Mr. Horn said, you know, he has never had one complaint actually about the fees. So, it's not like it's an issue that he, from an athletic director, that it was pressing for him and that he doesn't get a lot, you know, he hasn't had one actually complaint. So, I did want you to know that. It's not something he hears about. And that we do make sure, one, some of the questions that I did have was, how do we handle the waivers, students who don't pay their fees? And what has happened since this went in place is that the boosters actually pay those waivers. So, it's not like they don't have that funding. And it is, there's no burden of proof for a waiver for a child that if they come forward, the family comes forward, they have a form, I mean, they fill out just to give some information that, yes, they need a waiver. But, they don't ask for, you know, tax records or free and reduced or anything of that nature. They automatically give them the waiver. And that basically, it's, there's no cost for us to run the athletic fees. That was another question that I was asked. It's basically, they collect the money, they deposit it, and that's it. There's no cost to actually do this. We also looked at where, you know, right now, things that are funded, for instance, when they go on their athletic trips for drivers, for instance. Well, that actually comes out of Nancy Hendrickson's transportation budget. That's not even funded out of this. We have a line item for officials. This doesn't fund that. We have a line item for VHSL membership, a line item for charter bus trips if necessary. Our gate receipts actually currently go into equipment and supplies, trainer, field supplies, if there's something minor in the gym if they do need, which, because we're so awesome, we have a lot of playoffs at the end of the season. So, we do have meals and hotels and things that we have to apply that to. And Mr. Horn, and he would have been here tonight, but he's actually, wasn't available because he was out of town. But, this is actually, our funding is different than, for instance, what Fairfax does with their money. In Fairfax, when they collect their athletic fees, it just goes into the general fund. They've always still had line item to pay for what they've needed. And he wanted to communicate that the reason it's difficult for us, you know, where we are in the budget right now, and it has to come from somewhere else, is that our money directly goes into athletics and funds that aspect that we just, you know, haven't accounted to take away. The other aspect is our athletes, which, you know, we of course would want to maintain this. And Mr. Horn had expressed some time ago, and I'm sure some of you that have been on the board a long time remember, that we don't want to do fundraising. We don't want children out doing the cards and selling food. And so, you know, this has enabled us to sustain during the tough budget times. And, you know, going forward, again, in FY14, we don't see it as a problem. Mr. Kimball or I will make that work in the budget. But, for this year, it would have to come from somewhere else.
All right. Any questions on Dr. Jones' recommendation to not make this change at this time?
I just, I just have a comment. Because as a parent, I know sometimes, you know, you don't complain, but you complain at home.
Right.
And it is an issue at home. And so, I feel comfortable that the boosters will, you know, will step in. But, I really want something more of a commitment to say that this is going away next year.
Yeah.
And that, I don't know how we can do that, but I.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll bring it to you in the budget in FY14. We can do that.
Ms. Wadyska?
I would like to separate athletic fees from parking fees. Parking is a privilege.
Uh huh.
It is not a right. And so, I don't think that that's fair game for our discussion here.
I also would just make one additional comment about parking, which was when we escalated the parking fees during that tough budget year, the students got very upset about it. We invited them to provide us with alternatives and they did not. And so, I'm inclined with Ms. Wadyska, that's a privilege, to leave that.
I understand. I understand that. But, my daughter would, they would come and tell my daughter. And they would complain. And so, they don't come to the board, but they complain.
No, they came to the board. Well, they came to the board. And we went to them. Joan and I went to the high school and we listened to them and they came to the board.
And they're very well-known. And then, community members, our families would come to me and say, hey, you know, your penny.
It's a bus. We paid for the bus.
Yeah. But, they're still complaining.
Yeah. No, I understand that. And I remember those times. But, I felt like it's a good lesson to learn about how civics works and government works and budgeting work. We gave them every opportunity and their principal followed up with them, I know for a fact. And they, it wasn't important enough to them, for them to put any elbow grease into it. So, any other discussion down here?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do. So, that's a good, that's apropos of everything when we talk about how government and civics work. Because I don't like the fees and I don't think we need to wait until next year. I'm really getting the cold and prickly award tonight, aren't I?
Yeah.
I don't think I opposed you on anything once last year. And I'm 0 for 2 tonight. I, you know, there, I don't like the regressive nature of fees as well. I know that we have this issue where people will step in. And that's just silly. You know, I mean, we should fund this. It's an absolute oversight that we shouldn't have addressed this in the budget. And, you know, I'll take as much responsibility for that as anyone. Karen's probably going to hit me in the back of the head here in a second. But, yeah. So, we should find a way to do this this year. I know that we're saying it'll have to come from somewhere else, but I think we also, we still have some surplus revenue floating around out there in the world. So, we could probably bump this, you know, and to see if. So we could probably bump this, you know, and to see if that surplus revenue comes, I would be more than happy to, you know, propose that we relegate some of that funding towards killing these fees. As far as the parking, I don't disagree with you that, that there is a distinguishing factor to it. But a lot, at least, you know, anecdotally speaking, a lot of the parking is, there's kids that are trying to work. And, I mean, uh, you know, I mean, I, it's kind of like if we're gonna, if we're gonna have parking, uh, should the kids have to pay for it? I mean, especially here, I don't know. And, and it does affect some people differently than others. And, um, I just don't like that regressive nature. So I think we should do everything we can to get rid of it this year and next and every year going forward, if possible.
Mr. Sharp, have you a comment to make?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. Rasmick. You've covered a great deal of what I had hoped to cover. And I'm happy to pat you on the back for all that you said. Uh, also, we, um, I believe we do have some costs for dealing with this, uh, both in athletics and in parking. And, uh, it goes to, uh, having to collect the money throughout the year as far as athletics is concerned, uh, requiring various staff to be vigilant in making sure that the collections are made and processed correctly and, and that all, all are accounted for. It also has to do with parking, that there, uh, if, if we're not monitoring throughout the year, then I'm wondering, are we really enforcing that parking fees are, are being properly assessed and, and, and collected? So I think there are costs here that do offset the, uh, the, the money that we're taking in. There are, um, other jurisdictions that I think also implemented fees during this recessionary time period. It was, uh, it was a reluctant decision on their part and I think they have now revoked the fees. Uh, we also have at times indicated that we want to avoid private fundraising for things that we think are a very core part of our, our activity. And, uh, this is a form, if you are gonna impose these fees outside, you know, the regular revenue, uh, patterns that we usually see, it is a form of private fundraising that is directed at our parents. And, uh, we, I, I, I think in some instances that that's appropriate. And, uh, certainly athletics and parking sort of, um, move in, in that direction. But I think, uh, again, the, the, the offsetting, um, administrative difficulties of this and the, the really, uh, uh, you know, the fact that these things are taking place throughout the year and that, and that they're, uh, they're potentially diverting precious time from our staff to have to administer these, these, uh, these fees. Uh, I, I, I think it's, we're much better off without them than with them. They're, they're really a, a part and parcel of our core activities. And, uh, and, and, and we really shouldn't impose them unless they're really absolutely necessary. So I, I would vote to, uh, to pull them from fiscal year thirteen. Uh, yes, from, from fiscal year.
I, I gathered as much. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna just make one comment and I think we need to move to a vote on this particular matter. And that is, I do want to remind people that parking fees we've had for many, 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 many years. That wasn't new a couple of years ago. We did increase them a couple of years ago, but they were not new. And I think that parking fees for high school students have been standard at least since I was in high school. So, uh, yes, Ms. Highland, please.
I just, I wanted to make that point as well, but also, um, I, I think, um, if, if Mr. Horn gave us his assessment of how it's gone, I mean, he, that is, that's his recommendation that for at least the time being, it's okay to, to continue and we should revisit this next year. And so in, in terms of our taking the expertise of our staff and what they recommend, I think that's important that we not overlook that. And I do agree that the parking fees, every other school district has them. We have them. We are a small town and that's part of the reason we do is that there are other ways that our students can get to school. They don't need to drive. So it is, it is a privilege that we have them. And there's no, because we raise them, that doesn't make the administration any different of those fees.
Uh, Charlotte, I understand that, but then, you know, you were saying that this is Mr. Horn's recommendation. But we're the parents and we're the ones that have to, uh, you know, pay that extra money. And, and, and especially if students are taking a car to work, maybe to school, maybe it's because they need to get to work. And that money is very precious to them. And I just feel like, you know, we charge enough in property taxes. I think that we shouldn't be charging, you know, charging our students also. So I'm, Greg, I'm one hundred percent for, you know, taking it back this year. I don't know if Mohammed.
Madam Chair? Is there a motion of some sort?
No, not from me.
No?
Um, Madam Chair, I do want to make one comment. I, if there, if there is a motion made on this item tonight, I will vote no. And I vote no for this specific reason, that this item was put on the docket this evening for information and discussion only. It was not put on the docket for action. Moreover, it was put on our agenda. Um, and the athletic fees and parking predominantly impacts high school. And let's be blunt, if we're gonna look at fees, let's do so in a holistic and thoughtful manner for all of our schools and all the grades. And so this, this is not something we should do, uh, in a slingshot manner. And that's what we're prepared to potentially do if we take action tonight. And, uh, we, we put a lot of time and thought into putting those fees in, how much those fees would be, how we would handle students that were of need. So let's just not do this tonight. We should revisit the issue. We have plenty of time. We have work sessions. So I, I would just hate to see the board make a hasty decision here, especially when we have advice from staff that this is going to create a budget issue for us potentially in the coming year.
Yeah, I think that, uh, Madam Chair, I think that's a great way to approach it. But can we ask that if we, can we ask to maybe have a little more homework on this for our next work session? In the sense of if, because it does sound like there is enough of a sense of folks on the board that would be interested, at least half of the people here tonight, uh, in getting rid of the fees, how we could accomplish it, what ways we could do it? And then I would also like to know a little bit more about the parking, like, how, how do the slots get allocated? And, I mean, again, I, one of the reasons I hate user fees of any sort is because they're regressive, right? I mean, there may be children who are not parking because they just can't afford it. They don't even apply, don't even worry about it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, and so I'd like to know, you know, how it is that we decide who gets to park and who doesn't? Is it just first come, first served and whoever's got the money to pay for it? And do we have empty slots? Are all our parking spaces gone for the year, every year?
So I'm gonna suggest that we ask Dr. Jones to put this on a future agenda for discussion with more background information about this. Um, and we'll take it up at that time.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for the candid discussion. That was great. Um, next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Okay, I'm just gonna zip through a couple of things. Uh, we did get our IB results just started coming in today and, um, our IB diploma pass rate was ninety-eight percent, which is outstanding. And we had more than twenty different assessment areas that outpaced the international averages, which is, it's some of the best results that we've had. So we're very excited. Um, and Mr. Mizra, who of course is our IB coordinator, was just thrilled. Um, also, summer school is fully up and running at all of our, um, at all four levels. And, um, our, just as a reminder, at high school, this is the first summer we've had hybrid learning and it's all online this summer. And so we're really excited about that because it gives us the ability to run, uh, for some of our students who, for instance, did really well in a course, um, really failed miserably, say, the last four weeks of school. And it's a couple of chapters or items. They're able to go back in and redo and have competency-based assessments and work on those sections. And the staff have worked very hard to correlate and align the regular curriculum right with hybrid learning so that, and, and they're trying to really fine tune it. And I give, uh, Mr. Guy lots of credit and Steve Knight, who are kind of the administrative pieces behind, um, in really helping work with the teachers to make that happen. So very exciting, uh, what's going on there. We also, and just another, and, and, and when we do our end of the year and get all of our official results, you'll get lots of data, kind of like what you did from Liz, uh, Germer a little bit tonight. But we also this year, you know, to, to the credit of the high school, it's been a struggle for us over the last couple of years to get every senior to graduate. And this year we did. And that was, and we really credit a lot of that to being able to get those kids on the do-over halfway through the semester and be able to work with kids on an individual basis and having online capacity so that kids could do that. And we had one student who did finish with a GED. But again, it, what, the great thing for us is even with that student, uh, we were able to call the state department, make sure we're in compliance, you know, for Virginia. Um, but if a student graduates with a GED and they want to finish that last class and get a regular diploma, they can. So we've opened the door for that student to be in hybrid learning this summer. And we're hoping that, um, that student's able to complete. So it's a great summer for us there. And just in, in my last comments, I, I do want to say that, you know, with the power outages, I just want to point out a couple of people that worked so extremely hard. And I would be remiss to not acknowledge the staff. Uh, Richard, uh, Richard Kane and Bob Nissen came up over that very first weekend, had to move all of the food for summer school from one fridge, uh, to the building, to another building because the city was running out of, of fuel to be able to run the generators, um, just because they knew it was gonna be a long term. And so, you know, credit to them. Uh, we also had our tech department immediately was on staff. The server room quickly was up to a hundred degrees and they were onsite hours and hours. And then what made it worse for our poor tech department, which I know the school board is aware of, is that when the power came back on, it did something to one of the servers and kicked the server off. So they have been here literally, um, you know, from the Fourth of July as well as this whole last weekend. Literally no break for any of our tech team. Um, John Brett was actually away on vacation and when it first happened, and of course, he texted me and said, what do you need me to push out for the message? Still in tune, you know, even though he was on vacation. Um, Sevi Padilla was on vacation, immediately text, hey, is power on? What's going on? He remoted in from Virginia Beach so he could check all the cameras, see what was up, was back here on the weekend. Uh, Nancy Hendrickson had already, you know, before we talked, had already had her staff who lived in the city checking which roads were closed and, um, rerouting those bus routes because we were trying to get the school doors open. Um, so, I mean, it was just a huge team effort from our staff. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that they have worked twenty-four, seven to make this happen. So, um, I just, you know, thank them for all of their work and they're just so highly professional in everything that they do. And that's all from me.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that storm was quite a community affair, I think, on the school side, on the general government side, as well as on individual citizen's side. It was really quite something that I hope we don't have occasion to repeat again. It's time now for board comments. Ms. Garibar, do you have any board comments this evening?
Yes, I have one. I'm just so proud of our school, George Mason High School. Like you were saying, the international baccalaureate program. We, uh, I, we've received a phone call last week or this, July sixth, saying, and it was from Mr. Mizra. And he was congratulating our daughter that she earned her international baccalaureate, um, diploma. But I asked him, well, how many ki, how many students earned it? And, and how many? And he said forty-four. And I said, how many tried out, you know, how many tried out forty? Forty-four. That is spectacular. You know, for forty-four students to attempt it and to accomplish it, that, that says something about the students, but it also says something about the staff and how hard Mr. Mizra worked and the teachers and what a great job they did. So this is, this is really something for our small little school to have forty-four graduates. That, that's all I wanted to say.
All right, Ms. Highland?
I have nothing tonight.
All right. Uh, Mr. Rasmick?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to, I was, um, particularly struck by Richard's, Mr. Kane's story. Uh, and I just wanted to say, try not to be cheesy, but it, it made me think about, uh, President Kennedy's inauguration at the end when he borrowed from Isaiah and said that, that our work here on earth, uh, you know, that we need to do God's work, basically. And I, I really was just thinking, Richard is doing that. And I'm kind of sorry that Joan had to leave early because truth be told, that, uh, a lot of the work in that area and the program has been hers. Uh, and it just is the type of thing that just makes me feel really good about being here and living here. Um, and that the community would support that. Uh, it's good government. It's the right thing to do. And I'm just really couldn't be more proud of our staff in that regard. Uh, and then secondly, I think it might be good if we ask the superintendent, you know, uh, maybe we should send a letter from the school board to some of these employees who sound like took some extraordinary efforts during the storms, just thanking them. Um, if you wanted to, you know, jot something down for Susan's signature or something, that might make sense.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
Uh, Dr. Jones, thank you very much for your report on the high school graduation. It was one of the things that I complained about almost the first day that you were here. And, uh, your response is just, just extraordinary. Thank you so much. Also, uh, your staff's response to the, um, the storm that we had. Particularly, uh, I was pleased that you sent us a note about, uh, Ms. Hendrickson's, uh, providing assistance to the Winter Hill Senior Center. Uh, that was a very, very serious, uh, issue with them. Uh, they, they were, uh, you know, in, in a situation where they didn't have good information about where they could go or how they could, uh, obtain assistance. And, uh, taking assistance to them was just another outstanding way that, that, uh, our staff provided community service, uh, for our residents. Uh, I did have a, a number of congratulatory items to, uh, to offer this evening. Uh, Lou Olin, celebrating his ninety-fifth birthday. Godfather of our IB program. Ralph Perino, uh, a former, um, chair of our committee, uh, putting together education foundation events. And, uh, he is a, a teacher at Nova, was, uh, selected as teacher of the year for Nova for this past year. Steve Klass, a former, uh, English teacher in our schools and then moved on to be an English teacher in Fairfax County. Uh, he was recently elected president of the Partnership for Youth, uh, that serves both Fairfax and Falls Church City. And Michael Ankuma, our current president of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, he and his wife celebrating their twenty-fifth wedding anniversary today. So I want to extend, uh, congratulations to all of those. Did attend the Chamber, uh, Board Meeting this morning. And, uh, they had questions about the TJ construction program. And I was able to relate to them, thanks to Dr. Jones' reports, uh, that, that is on schedule. Uh, while you haven't been able to observe, uh, construction going on outside, there's been construction going on inside, uh, to renovate the gym. And, uh, it's really been necessary to, uh, to schedule, set, schedule construction things so that, uh, that inside programming could, could, uh, be finished and then the outside programming can, can pick up from there. And extra time was put in, uh, as a result of the storm stoppage that, that occurred, power outage. Extra time was, uh, scheduled for the inside work to get that completed on time, uh, once the, the storm had ended. The Chamber is cooperating with the, uh, with Sister Chamber in Merrifield for their July luncheon. So if you're looking for the July luncheon, uh, to, to occur at, um, at the Italian Cafe as it usually does, please do not go to the Italian Cafe. It will not be there. Uh, the Chamber Luncheon, this, this, uh, July, uh, and this will be the seventeenth, which is next Tuesday. That luncheon will be at the Sea Pearl Restaurant in Merrifield. And they'll be, uh, describing the, uh, the mosaic, uh, development that's taking place in Merrifield. Also anticipate that there will be a Falls Church News Press, uh, gathering for the, uh, the Chamber and that that is likely to be July the twenty-sixth, although the Thursday, uh, that's been their traditional day. Uh, that has not finally been set, so look for a, uh, confirming announcement from the News Press as to when that, uh, that will occur. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I have a few comments myself this evening. First, um, I'd like to recognize and thank my colleague, Greg Rasmick. He was vice chair of this group for the second half of our year. He stepped up in the middle of the year when Patrick had to leave us and did great service, uh, to the kids of our community and to, uh, the parents and the families. And so thank you for doing that. Um, don't think you're off the hook completely. We will call on you for special missions this year. Um, second, I want to, uh, recognize and congratulate my colleague, Charlotte Highland, who was elected as the vice chairman of, uh, the school board this evening in our organizational session. And thank her for stepping up to, uh, serve the board in this way. It'll take some of your time away from other things you might be enjoying, but I think it'll be gratifying. And I'm just as pleased as I can be that you're working in that role for the board this year. for the board this year. Um, I want to let the board know that I had a text from Dr. Jones today, that, uh, there will be a gang of eight meeting this Friday morning. I'm not sure of the time yet, but I just wanted you to be aware, I'm sure that the discussion of the surplus revenue will take place in that meeting, and, um, some of you may be called upon as a result of that, to help us in certain ways. So I'll report back after the meeting, but I want you to be aware of it. Um, I wanted to thank, um, the staff at the high school and the principal at the high school for having me at graduation. It's been a few weeks, but we haven't been together since that time. And for those of you who have not been to our high school graduation, it's just a beautiful ceremony. It's just, um, the location is fabulous, and the way it's organized is fabulous, and the kids are absolutely amazing, the graduates and the talented seniors and juniors who perform there. So I encourage everybody to go next year, it was just really, really great. And how cool was it that Rosara got to come up and give her daughter her diplomas? So that's becoming a really, um, a tradition in the board, because Charlotte Hyland did that with her daughter last year. Um, I wanted to report back, as I've mentioned to you before, um, I'm participating in a program this year called Lead Virginia, where, uh, the cohort and I, there are 54 of us, are traveling the state, learning about education in each section of the state, learning about economic development, and also about healthcare. And it's been a just tremendous experience for me so far. Um, uh, last month, we were at Shenandoah, so we were down in the Staunton, um, area, Harrisonburg area, and I met a gentleman, uh, who is, um, an acting dean at James Madison University, Dr. Jerry Benson, who was talking about an ethical decision-making framework and, and curriculum they're rolling out at the university for both students and staff. And, um, I chatted with him afterwards, and asked him if he'd be willing to talk with Dr. Jones and with me about that framework, and whether that could be something that could be applied for our high school students. And so, he said, yeah, absolutely. So tell me I'll be contacting him, and we'll report back to the board about that. I just thought that would be a fabulous addition to what we do here. Um, you know, we have our honor code in the high school, which is, you know, part of that, um, kind of thing. Um, and, um, then the last thing I, I wanted to do was say that the board will have a work session. I'd originally thought the 31st, but in keeping with our decision earlier this evening, to have our work sessions on the Fourth Thursday, on the 24th of July, a, a work session. And we will continue our kind of organizational work for the year, talking about the work plan, liaison assignments. Um, I'm going to send you a note to my colleagues, asking you to please give me input about the work plan, about what priorities you think we need to have this year, what kind of goals we need to set, and then I'll pull that stuff together. Um, Charlotte and Dr. Jones and I will sit down, and we'll come up with a draft for a meeting on the 31st, for discussion among the entire board, and then we'll finalize that plan later in the summer, and, um, formally adopt it as a board, probably the first meeting after Labor Day, when everybody's back in school, and people are paying attention and can see, you know, what the board's up to. So if you want to put that on your calendar, and expect an email from me with a homework assignment, um, to remind you about that. And, um, I think with that, um, I will simply say, if you would look at the materials that are online, um, we're going to move to closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So if someone could read us into closed session, that would be great. Is there something else, Greg?
No, it seems to have somebody else headed it.
Oh, okay.
I do, yeah. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, superintendent's performance evaluation.
Second?
Thank you. Mr. Kimball?
Uh, Ms. Garibar?
Yes.
Ms. Hyland?